Seven o'clock, I'll call the meeting to order. So the first thing on the agenda is to approve the minutes of the previous meeting. Did everyone receive when you went out?
Yeah.
So any, any comments?
No, I move we approve the minutes from the previous meeting.
Any discussion? Okay, moved and seconded. Um, Robert, I, you can do one.
Oh, here you can do it.
You can, you don't have to call the board. There, all those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, it's passed. Uh, trainer's report?
I have nothing for you.
Trainer's report.
Um, I think last time I updated the board on Stoddard Street, discontinuance of that public way. Nothing really has happened with that, other than I've just connected that attorney with the select board. So they'll get onto a select board meeting probably. Uh, it sounds like now, but by July, some of their meetings filled up for June. The, so again, working on RFP for Holy Angels redevelopment. Oh, actually, I was able to confirm with town manager, who's the procurement officer. So instead of skipping the RFP formal procurement process on that, because it's a engineering slash planning service that will be required to do a redevelopment study for the Holy Angels and related parcels. And so what I can do, instead of doing a formal procurement bid process, you know, developing the scope and putting it into a formal document, advertising it and all that, all that stuff. I can just get three bids from, from firms. And so that's what I'm intending on doing currently. I'm talking to Weston Sampson to see if they're interested in the work and see if they can provide me a cost and a timeline. And then I'm going to reach out to tie and bond next. And then I just got to reach out to somebody after that, but it'll help move that along on behalf of the EDC. So again, that was a redevelopment, redevelopment scenarios for Holy Angels. And incorporating the two town-owned lots on Grove Street, wrapping into that project to identify for potential reuse and redevelopment. And so Weston Sampson has already done a significant amount of resource delineation in the area because they did the Grove Street Bridge design. So they have a leg up as far as completing a lot of the work that would need done. Because I'm also going to wrap into that the resource delineation for the downtown area as we need done. And that was, that, that was done through earmark funds. So I can, uh, anyway, because it's all related, I plan on putting it all together and seeing if I can get one firm to do it all.
Village District is what, three, three heights, three stories?
I believe that's what we have at S currently, right? I'll double check, obviously, ahead of discussing potentials with the, whoever's awarded the contract.
Or is it two, but you can put a room over, you can put an apartment over the?
You can do that through the mixed-use option, right? So, and that's, I believe, through special permit.
So that's, that's part of how we're marketing it?
Well, this is just, this would be just to identify potential build-out scenarios, to identify permitting requirements. And because a lot of the problems we're running into with interest for redevelopment of Holy Angels is developers don't have a clear path forward with it. They, they look at it and they say, yeah, okay, that could be nice. But the, the money that would take to invest in developing engineering plans. And then we'd be unsure as to what the, uh, the scenario would be once we go through all the permitting required. It could be 200-foot riverfront buffer from Center Brook. So, and then there's obviously flood plain. And then there's a complicating factor of the activity use limitation that is a, uh, known contamination on the not gravel lot, not the gravel lot, the gravel lot, not the paved lot that we have. The gravel lot right next to.
What kind of contamination?
I forget.
It's oil, I think.
Because it used to, yeah.
Remember they used to store tankers there and?
Yeah, exactly. It was underground storage of, of, of gas tanks, tanks.
Had those remediated or anything?
Yeah, there's an AUL on it before.
It was, um, not completely remediated, right? Because there's still an active, active activity use limitation. So the only thing that could be done with that area basically is just cap it for parking.
The tanks were removed though?
Oh, yeah, those were, yeah, tanks were removed. So anyway, getting, getting a firm on board to identify potential scenarios of like the footprint build-out of use to identify whether or not, to identify the permitting scenario that would be a result of any without scenario. So, so trying to push that forward and keep working on that.
And in this, the solicitation for interest, the privately owned property that's owned by Thompson?
It is, yeah.
Yeah. Is that included in the Thompson block? Is that?
That'll be included. I'll have to reach out to them ahead of awarding any contract. And see if they're on board to having that done. I, I imagine they'd be interested just because it'll potentially, potentially assist in any resale of that property. But I do have to reach out to them on that. Next, this Thursday, this Thursday, EDC's meeting. And we've invited Metro West Regional Transit Authority, MWRTA, to start initial discussions about what value they could bring to the town essentially. The town is currently allocated the amount of $60,000, which is paid to the T on your behalf. And, and my understanding is you can not import it, except the requirement to have an MBTA community district, which we'll talk about soon. But one of the things that you might expect to receive through that, and that's money that doesn't come directly out of your, your, your tax levy or anything like that. It's just money that's dedicated on your behalf, the town's behalf, and then given to the T for their services. The, with that money, the town is, uh, is, is able to get services. So the, unfortunately, it just seems that the T is not providing services. I don't know the history of that and if anybody's ever reached out to the T to ask for the ride, is what they call their paratransit services, you know, the dial-a-ride thing, but providing ADA services to rides to, um, uh, medical appointments and things like that. So I don't know if that's ever existed in town, but it does seem like it exists currently. Everyone I talked to has never seen that bus anywhere.
Is that anyone here?
I've certainly never seen it. I drive through town all the time. And so, yeah, but, but go ahead.
Is that automatically allocated to, and not, because I thought we were in the Worcester Regional Transit Authority?
We are not.
Catchment area.
We are not. We're just outside of the WRTA.
Okay.
Yeah, Grafton gets services.
Who's W?
Northbridge gets services. Oh, good question. I don't know if they're MWRTA or WRTA.
And would it be possible, because the road is kind of, the ride is kind of a niche service? Is impossible to get the right bits of van service, like, to MBTA stations, since we're in MBTA community, like on a routine basis?
So possibly, we're going to have all these, probably that question and more in somewhere tonight with MWRTA to see what they, what level of service they can provide.
Just tomorrow with Thursday.
I'm sorry, Thursday.
And this is also, I mean, they go out as far as the Price Chopper in Hawkestown. That's the end of their line. So it's not like downtown for me.
Um, and so that we're not talking about dedicated lines. We don't have the ridership in town. We don't have the demographics to support that.
Which you could.
But the value could in the future. The value it potentially provides is at seemingly no cost. I mean, we'd be switching, instead of the $60,000 given to the T, that $60,000 would then just be transferred over to MWRTA. And MWRTA could then providing an alternative or even supplemental bus service for the folks who need it.
But I mean, I, I think, I think that your idea was, was better in some ways is, yeah, if, if we, if we could have regular service that would bring you either to the train in Westboro or to the train in Framingham, because there are more, more stuff there. The Ashland Station.
Yeah.
And that, right now, that, that bus comes out, it comes out to, to Hawkestown.
And that would feed, if you had transportation, that would facilitate the development. You know, I mean, this is a type of stuff that we could look at and handle.
This is, this is like the initial step to like, even just getting into a relationship with a transit authority, because currently there is none.
Yeah.
Um, but there's no contract or otherwise with WRTA. To my knowledge, there, there never has been. And then discussing with the WRTA, because that was, that was the first thought as well, is, well, it would make sense to reach out to the Worcester Transit Authority. It's through review of the ridership and the types of trips and, and services that, that Upton has, everything seems more eastbound.
Yeah.
It's not saying that people don't go northbound and westbound since Worcester, that certainly they do. But most of town is Milford, Framingham, towards Boston area. So MWRTA makes more sense. So we'll be having that discussion on Thursday night. They're also just in this, researching, just in initial discovery phases of potentially what it would take to create town. Being in town, um, to be able to capitalize on existing town properties, that sort.
They have a fairly extensive contract with Nexan already.
Oh, we do?
We do, yes. And it covers quite a bit of.
Enough?
Usage.
Now, kind of a private, I mean.
Well, we entered into a contract with Nexan for the off-take. That's credits from the facility.
Okay.
Who is we, the town or?
Yeah. Good to know. Okay.
Yeah.
Can they put them under power watch?
No, it's a, it's a, it was an arrangement where they built a solar facility in Seekonk and then started selling energy that was generated. And where we took 56%.
Okay. She bought into a community solar or give the town?
Yes.
Okay. And so you're receiving credits because you purchased the energy from that?
Right, so the, the full value of the credit gets applied to our accounts and we pay them 77%.
Got it.
And I can tell you that pretty much maxed out. In terms of the energy we get from them? Yes, because we've ended up at times with significant credits.
Okay.
So, I don't know, I mean, to the extent that we have to deal with it.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, and there may be a way we can basically transfer that to somebody else. And then take advantage of the basically flow you set up from town.
Do you know some sort of contract?
Yeah, it's a 20-year contract.
Yeah, okay. All right, good to know. I'll probably follow up with you on that ahead of Thursday. Okay, EDC, thanks.
I just looked on the wall for the phone. I don't know if you remember, but they used to be on the wall.
Hard liar.
The, the 40B was next scheduled to be on for June 20th, which is a Thursday. There was a request to continue that to the 13th. So I, I assume.
13th of July?
Of, of July, yes, thank you. Oh, wait. It's 13th, I've been incorrect in saying.
This whole meeting so far.
I'm just making a. The 17th, sorry, that's why I immediately corrected. 17th of July. Uh, so it will be, um, and that was because of, uh, the calendars of, of, of folks involved being available. So they'll, the zoning board will convene June 20th, which is actually a Thursday, because Juneteenth is a holiday. Um, and then they will likely be voting to continue that public hearing to July 17th, which is a, a Wednesday, as is their typical schedule.
Is there anything, do you continue to gather? I mean, what, what, what is left to do? Was everything resolved? Any other?
I mean, that last meeting, they talked about, it was mostly civil engineering review, which is essentially wrapped up. I mean, there's, there's some, some notational outliers and things like that. The applicant has to address through revised plans, but there were not substantial issues as a result of the civil review that needs to be addressed. The, the developer has also submitted to the Conservation Commission the notice of intent, and that's under the State Act review. Um, so there'll be additional rigor in review in regards to stormwater components, which is a, is, is an item of contention, as you know.
How about the archaeological historic? There was some issues that were raised by.
I, I mean, I can only speak to what the state has spoken about. And the state, I mean, the applicant did submit a note of, I'm forgetting what the form is called, but the notification commission, and that historic reviewed it and stamped it saying there's, there's nothing of significant interest on the site for them to, to warrant them to take action on anything. So.
So at the July 17th meeting, is that when the ZBA votes on it?
Potentially.
With the special?
Potentially. We're working with, the applicant has agreed through consultation with our special attorney for the 40B, that they've agreed to leave the public hearing open during deliberations. So typically you would close the public hearing, can't hear any more comments, no new information can be presented to the board. The board is deliberating on their decision based on the information that they've been presented. And in that time, you know, they talk about conditions that have been discussed and things that they want to include it on the decision. Uh, our, our attorney, Chris Alton, suggested that, and asked for them to leave the public hearing open so that all could be involved with the decision process in suggesting conditions. You know, a discussion on waivers, things like that. So that's, so the, the public has the opportunity to, to be heard and not feel the stress. Yeah, that's, that's not a typical way of doing things. It was our counsel's suggestion based on his experience dealing with highly contentious 40B projects in the past.
So Kevin Lopez here agreed.
They agreed to do that.
The only thing I would add is that, are they planning on someone else building this other than Loews? That should be part of their thought. Last one, we approved for that applicant, right, sold immediately. And now we're dealing with a whole different applicant that we may or may not have. Probably treated the same.
That's a good question, because that might have implications on the state side of things. Uh, right, right. So it probably wouldn't have much implication for, because the town doesn't, can't really control for that specifically. But in this case, because the applicant is receiving approval as a limited dividend company to be eligible for the 40B.
So.
Were they to sell it later, that could, who knows, maybe that might cause complications.
I, I believe that Lopez here still owns and manages or is responsible for managing 149 main, which is the other.
Yeah, but, but, but you're thinking of the one.
He's taking a call to screen call, which is different, because that wasn't a point for me.
Yeah.
That was a, that was easy to put, this guy that has credits and some, you know, it's just a whole different.
And I hope he does build it. He's a great builder, so.
Yeah.
So the last thing I'll just mention is that in your materials tonight, you just, you received site plan application from Five Fork Farms. Uh, that was just submitted late on Thursday, so we couldn't get that onto the agenda for today with the holiday on Monday. So it's not on the agenda for tonight. So I'll defer to the, the board and the chair whether or not you want to add that under items not recently anticipated to discuss. Just the review of the initial submission or anything like.
One person has the authority to print within 48 hours. You, Madam Chairperson, you want to talk about it? We can.
Well, we wait till the.
We wait until.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be talked at all if you don't.
Well, let's see, it's a meeting until 10 o'clock. I just, one more question. Um, the ZBA meeting, was there any more discussion about Crockett Road?
The, well, I mean, there was a lot of discussion about Crockett.
Was there anything resolved on that or was it just?
Not the, not on 99 Crockett, which was the two families.
So one family, two family.
That the board just got, decided they didn't have enough information to make a decision on that and requested a continuance. Um, so that actually will also be discussed at the July 17th meeting.
So we have a lot of problem with a lot of houses around the size. It's in a two-acre song.
Yeah.
Eight thousand and none of them were built there at that size way back when, all grandfathered.
Well, and it's, Crockett Road's always been sort of famous for going their own way, because no one can see what they're doing.
Well, I think at the meeting that you did not have, it was discussion about like giving it all to Milford.
It's just a thought.
Are you familiar, every Christmas?
You can only get to Crockett Road by driving through Milford.
Oh, really? Doesn't, there's a, there's a excuse for that.
I remember the guy that was building the, like, four-story house down there at one point, that big.
Yeah, it was big.
Yeah. That was still there, not finished, I don't think.
Trying to read some history on the project that 149 made, going back through some of the previous meetings. Is the board, this, the planning board doesn't have jurisdiction over that? It goes right to ZBA?
Yeah.
Because it's 40B, it's possible to use it.
You know, 140Bs were even made, this planning board was for so resilient or resistant to.
Yeah, with housing trends.
Housing, so we didn't want any of that stuff. We're going to bypass planning laws and make law that goes with the slighman and the ZBA.
Yeah. And, and no, no local bylaws are flawed.
Yeah, well, yeah.
So they punish us.
I'm just curious, because I mean, we just, I was used to going through the whole process. On who was out of Connecticut.
You guys stay out of it.
We. It's okay. I was just trying to read. I was just wondering why there were exclusion.
That's a great question.
All up to this day. Okay.
Yeah, I know Connecticut has the same, Connecticut has the same law in the books, the required 10%. And then if you don't meet the 10%, then you're subject to something sort of equal to Massachusetts being law. But when I was in Connecticut, they didn't, the town I worked for was never subject to that. So I don't know how it was handled, if it just went to one board versus all boards or if it was kept out of local control entirely.
Trying to remember, I just knew, you know, as a planning zone, we weren't, we weren't cut out of the process. I'm sure data trials are around, because then you get your input from all the different boards and agencies and stuff. As the year back, as I, as I read on this one, I was selected on the various boards about the historical commission, about the issues and questions, stuff to be addressed, you know.
I wonder about what is probably going to be incorporated.
MBTA community.
What's that?
Why do we make Crockett Road as MBTA community? You know, um, you know, the, the other thing with the 40Bs, it's also very difficult. The ZBA can't just deny a special permit, because there'll be a field. And so they have to have, you know, it's a, it's a strict process.
Yeah.
But if the developer, you know, dots on the I's and crosses on all the D's, the zoning board can't come up with a excuse not to grant it. Because, you know, the whole thing is what you're about to have.
I don't know, I understand that early, early on.
So, okay, so next on the agenda, public meeting, preliminary subdivision plan, conventional governance landing, six over street. Sean, do you want to talk or?
I am here. I don't really have much or anything to present. I think when we left off last time, there was just a couple little procedural questions on how the board wanted to proceed with this. So my understanding is we're just kind of waiting for an action by the board. And in talking to our attorney, said it didn't matter, because right now we have the freeze. The important thing is, is that we filed the definitive subdivision by the seven, seven-month window, which I think was in November, which we're planning on doing. So with that, kind of in the board's hands.
Can we, can we just write a letter saying?
Yeah, what we, what we've done in the past, we agree with you 100%. But we're more courteous than that. We'd like to least respond in some way. But the response, but the response is that we've received your application. No waivers have been granted. And when the definitive is filed, please refer to the subdivision control laws. Appreciate it.
Sounds completely, completely reasonable to me. That makes sense.
Thanks.
Please, can you put that together?
Yeah, through, through the chair, the only remaining item, and it sounds like obviously the board is satisfied at this stage of the game.
We can be a house owner?
With, with where you are. The, the remaining question was, that was being thrown around with, at, at the last agenda that was gone was, did you want to bother going out for a peer review at this time? Obviously, it sounds like the board is not leaning towards that at the time. You would, you'd obviously have the ability to go out for peer review during definitive.
Yeah.
So that probably should be in the form of a motion that we could vote and then send them the, the vote for.
Was that a motion?
Was that a motion? Yeah.
I, I could make the motions. Planning board has received the preliminary application. No waivers have been granted at this time. And filing the definitive plan, please refer to the applicant's subdivision control file.
I'll second that. Okay, so we'll do the second and then we just go. Okay, all those in favor?
I, I.
All opposed? And I assume this will be under the signature of the new chair. So Sean, I think I made it a full year as chair, full year, any meeting as chair. I don't think I did.
But I signed the first document. I signed it now, there's a line in like 2004, so.
Well, I think for, for one project or another, I guess, going back, I've seen, I think, three, four different chairs perhaps. So.
No, we switch every year. Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Great. Well, anyways, thank you very much for your time, folks, and we'll be in touch soon.
Okay.
And Sean first of all.
Thank you. Have a good night.
The next thing on the agenda is Ashland Chestnut Realty LLC. That was, that was not realty.
That was that one?
That was that one. I'm making things up now.
I got things wrong.
I got something wrong. So we're going to do these at the end of meeting, the, the capital budget appointments?
But yeah, whatever.
Do folks have a problem if we move the reelection office? See, I'm such a good job, I'm such a good job at being active here. Uh, planning board discussion or action items? The discussion of the inclusionary zoning analysis that RKG did?
So.
Hi.
Before we throw it to Eric, I'll just, through the chair, obviously I've been in contact with the updating board that, you know, the town receives grant funds to bring on RKGs to do the economic feasibility analysis. That is to evaluate any potential inclusionary zoning component of the proposed MBTA district. And so that's what Eric is here to discuss. Thank you, Eric. And they're, they're presenting here tonight. And, and just quickly, the geographic areas that were subject to this feasibility analysis were the, a, a section of Governor's Landing, a project as it relates to the general business zone that runs along those parcels, as well as a, a pretty much the, the Upton center business district. uh, as well as, uh, uh, pretty much the, the Upton Center Business District area. Those were two, two areas that were taken into consideration for this. Obviously, that is, that is and can be subject to change through this board. Uh, you are, you are not committed to those areas, um, through discussion, uh, later on, maybe public hearings, um, or probably prior to public hearings. But, um, if the board wishes to evaluate other properties, obviously, you should feel free to do so. Um, and Eric, correct me if I'm wrong. Um, I think, uh, so long as the, the, um, dimensional controls and other things stay pretty much static. Um, and, uh, the, there isn't, um, a large change in the acreage dedicated to the, the district, then the E F A shouldn't change much as far as its, um, recommendations, correct?
Exactly, yep.
So I just wanted to preface that tonight, um, and I'll do the chair, I'll hand it back over to Eric, R K G.
Okay.
Great, so I have a couple of slides and let's see. Uh, can, can everyone hear me? My computer screen froze on me here.
Yep.
Oh, okay. Let's see.
Having fun watching that little dot go around the black screen. Like, this is so cool, man.
Eric, did you have slides? You can, um, email them to me or.
Yeah, oh, there you go. Yes, that, is it working now? Okay. Great, everyone can see that? Okay, great. Um, so to just sort of kick things off, uh, in terms of some background about the E F A analysis, you know, as we were previously just discussing, based on the requirements of section four B uh, of the E O H L C's compliance guidelines, if a municipality seeks to permit a greater level of affordability from that ten percent at eighty percent of area median income, it's subject to an economic feasibility analysis, which is basically used to demonstrate that any additional requirements in affordability wouldn't inhibit future multifamily development. Um, and so just some general context about the model and, and how this sort of works. Um, the economic feasibility model is a pro forma based Excel model that is designed to test the financial impact of potential policy changes against the financial risk or reward of a potential investment. So at, at its most basic level, the model is designed to capture construction costs, operational costs, and compare those to the potential revenues to determine whether multifamily projects will meet or exceed local return expectations, which vis a vis, that means economic feasibility or infeasibility. And so using this approach, we test a number of different scenarios involving various project sizes and set asides to determine what would be feasible, uh, for multifamily development on average. And so just to really briefly talk about the basic components of the model, we rely on a number of data sources, which I, I can get into a little bit on the next couple of slides, and interviews with local developers. And we basically use these inputs, uh, to develop a set of construction inputs such as soft costs, hard costs and land costs. Uh, we also use it for operational costs, so financing costs such as debt and equity to pay for the project, marketing, management, as well as other operational expenses. And then we also use market data to determine what rents are, sales prices are, and potential other revenue sources such as parking or other fees associated with living in a multifamily development. And then we use these to evaluate financial feasibility. And so one thing I do want to note about this modeling process is, uh, this type of analysis is testing of policy scenarios. So it requires us to make a number of assumptions to create a series of archetypal development projects that test the various supportability requirements. And really what this means is we're, we're testing based on the guidelines and requirements of E O H L C. We're not doing very deal specific, uh, modeling for a project. And so what that means is we're not using specific architectural plans or building specific plans or estimates. We're assuming relative ease of developing a parcel, meaning there's not a lot of hard costs associated with demolition, blasting, major site improvements or other infrastructure costs. Um, we're using land costs derived from residual land values, um, and assessment data and using market comparables rather than an actual land acquisition deal. Um, and then other things like construction hard costs are based on market averages as well as some of the economic variables we use. So again, this is more of a, a policy way of testing economic development feasibility, um, using this sort of pro forma approach. Um, and so.
Uh, just to drop for one step, the long acronym that you've just used, that's the E O H L C is Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, correct?
Yes.
The ones that are, we have a new member, so I just wanted to make sure that.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Um, great. And so speaking of E O H L C, uh, this slide and the next one, which, which you'll also find in the report, these are the sets of inputs that we're using and the sources of those inputs uh, that are required by each O H L, E O H L C when we submit an E F A. So here you're looking at the construction costs and operating, uh, expenses. And then on the next slide, we're looking at revenue sources such as market comps for various rent uh, per bedroom size as well as financial assumptions. Um, and basically what this all culminates into is a model that produces three types of financial return measures, which we use to evaluate economic feasibility. The first is cash on cash. The way you could think about this is it's return on the actual cash that you invested into the property. Uh, return on cost, this is just another way of thinking about return on investments. And then the last one is internal rate of return. You can think about this as your overall annualized return of an investment like over time, taking into account the time value of money going forward in time. Um, and basically we use these three measures rather than just one to really evaluate the financial feasibility of a project. And so the last thing I want to talk about before I get into results is, as we discussed previous in, in toward the beginning of the presentation, um, we're testing two districts, the Upton Center Business District as well as the Route one forty East Small. What you're looking at is the zoning inputs from the M B T A compliance model, which we received um, from the town. And we use the dimensional requirements such as building heights, parking spaces per dwelling unit, uh, as ways of, um, effectively modeling the build out requirements for those zoning districts. We also use the final unit capacity, um, results from the M B T, M B T A compliance model, which provides the number of units for each parcel included in the district. And we use those to evaluate the set of scenarios, starting with whatever the smallest level of development that triggers the inclusionary zoning requirement, which in this case is six or more units.
And I ask another question. I, let me, I mean, do you, do you want to finish or can we interrupt as, as we go along?
Uh, whichever you prefer. Yeah, whichever you prefer.
Yeah, I have a hard time holding a thought, so. Uh, I thought that the, um, building height for M B T A communities was four stories? Is it two and a half? So yeah, whatever, our zoning is two and a half, but I thought, uh, the M B T A communities.
Eric, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm not familiar with any requirement through uh, H L C regarding any max or min for, for that.
Yeah, there, there is no max or min, at least from my experience, um, working in a number of communities. And I would mention really what the building height requirement impacts is the type of construction. So if you were to go to four stories, that's still wood framed, so the results would be very similar because that's a totally different type of construction.
Okay, so.
The, the biggest control for that, Eric, um, uh, through the chair is not necessarily the height, but the, uh, obviously the density requirement, uh, that we, where we're required to achieve.
Yeah.
Yep. Great. Um, and so the last slide I, I want to really cover is the results now. Um, and as you can see, we tested multiple, um, development sizes ranging from six to a hundred units, um, using a twelve and a half set aside at eighty percent of area median income and fifteen percent set aside at eighty percent of area median income. And the really important things to note are your internal rates of return and your return on cost, which is effectively your return on investment. Both of these for all project scenarios, uh, were exceeding what typical market expectations are, meaning that if you were to have a twelve and a half or fifteen percent set aside, it wouldn't inhibit the development of both. This would in fact be economically feasible. Um, and then the last slide that I've included, I'm not going to read all of this to you. Um, it's included in the report, but effectively this just restates that the twelve and a half and the fifteen percent set aside at eighty percent are economically feasible. This is largely due to the fact that rents are very strong, as is the case for much of Massachusetts. Uh, wood frame construction and surface parking are both types of construction that, um, really are not offset by the rents, or, or sorry, are really offset by the rents in a, in a good, in good, which is, uh, good in terms of development. Um, and then cash on cash, we include, I know, you may know, it is kind of in, in this sort of pink, but so far from all of the E F As that we've submitted to E O H L C, uh, the feedback that we've gotten from them is that they really are just looking at your return on cost and your internal rates of return, um, for evaluating whether a project's economically feasible. Um, and with that, I believe that's all I have for presenting. I'm happy to field any questions or jump back to any slides, um, clarify anything. Uh, seeing anyone, so feel free to just, just ask questions.
So I, Erica, just, um, I just wanted to highlight basically what you have on the, oh, if you go back where you just had up.
Oh, sure. Sure.
Um, I mean, these were the, these were the constraints that fed the model, right? So, um, you know, I, I, when, when got consulting with R K G, um, I provided, uh, these as sort of what the standard dimensional controls are that, um, uh, the town has, just trying to utilize, you know, uniformity in, in design town. So you have a maximum building height of two point five, which is, um, you know, as Tom was mentioning, you know, you, we might have the, the option to go up to three stories in the Center Business District.
Um, based on the fire, we put the fire, so that was one of the main reasons why we didn't have smaller than that.
Sure.
But getting more revenue out of each building was the goal.
Sure, um, so I mean, um, I'm sure if the height were to go up, the, you know, that might have a positive impact um, on, on the findings here. But as, as a baseline, um, two point five stories is basically what the uniform height is across most of the districts and towns. That's just what we worked on to, to feed the model here. Um, that, uh, again, through, through, um, uh, discussion and, and, and actually setting those dimensional controls and setting the district, this, this board wants to allow for an increase in height um, and go up to three stories or, or anything, but certainly have that option, we can.
A question on the assumptions they've used. Would be pretty much same except for rent, land cost, I think, thirty thousand per unit. I don't know, that seems high for a hundred thousand unit building, but okay for six, maybe it's reasonable. But what, uh, what localities were used, were the assumptions based on?
Um, so you came in and out there for a minute. What I heard was basically you want to know where some of the assumptions came from? You were referring to land acquisition costs per unit?
Oh, yes, yes, that's specific, but in general, uh, the communities that we use to calculate your assumptions, were they similar to Upton, were they bigger, more city like? It would be a different, uh, analysis or were they the surrounding towns, Mr. County kind of things?
Yes, so they were surrounding towns. I know there was, um, if I'm remembering correctly, there was a recent new development, um, in Milford called The Quill. And there was another one in Hopkinton, which was a recent new development. So we looked at a bunch of those. Um, but yeah, we basically pull from Upton and surrounding towns. We use the assessment data and, uh, for your comment regarding the land acquisitions, you are correct. We use the thirty K per unit as sort of the baseline, but then depending on the scale and size of development, that number will go up and down because obviously if you have a hundred units, the land cost per unit would, would not be the same. Um, but these are just the set of standardized assumptions that E O H L C requires us to submit um, with each of the E F As.
So question, um, so the point of this, um, exercise was just primarily to assess the number of affordables that we could, that Upton could support.
Yeah.
Um, so, you know, to really go back to a possible scenario. Um, if we did the downtown, we were looking at the downtown Economic Development District. And we looked at that area that you were talking about earlier with Holy Angels and that. And we decided to do that as, then we could go up to three stories. And that would reduce the number, maybe if we're doing business on the first floor, it wouldn't, but that would reduce the, probably reduce the cost a little bit.
Potentially, I don't, I, um, I'd, uh, have to look at the total. We need at least ten acres.
Yes, but do they have to be?
I don't know if that's ten acres. It might. Uh, Holy Angels plus those two.
Well, if you did the whole thing.
Right.
That whole area.
Oh, yeah.
But I'm just thinking if, if you did, I wasn't thinking of making it small, I'm just saying, okay, so let's look at that particular area.
The, the only, um, and that's absolutely so, uh, and that, that is captured within this, um, uh, analysis. For the most part, I don't think, I don't think I outlined the entire, entire district, uh, for that. Um, I think it was, uh, sort of a sub district within the district, but we can, we can look at the map another time. I don't have it, um, uh, set up, but the only thing worth, um, among other things, uh, something else worth discussion is the unit count that would be, um, provided as, as a result of, of, of a larger area. So you have for the density that has to be provided, um, fifteen units per acre. Um, just want to make sure we're not, through the compliance model, that this, this, uh, shows right here is, is a clipping of the compliance model. Um, this, and this doesn't show the maximum output of potential units, I don't think. Um, but as far as an entire district, I would just be concerned, you don't want to make the district too big and then have a number like a potential four thousand units or something, because that would be hard. I, I assume that would be hard.
Oh, no, I was, I was still thinking in the same district. I was, you know, I was thinking.
Okay.
Maybe the district. So it's sixteen per, per um, for fifteen acres is what we're talking about, fifteen acres, correct?
Um, we need, so the, the, the requirement is a hundred and fifty, hundred and fifty units over ten acres, which is fifteen units per acre.
Yeah, is there a unit size minimum square footage?
I don't believe so, Eric, is there a minimum square footage of, uh, units?
No.
So it could be a thousand square foot or a few thousand square foot, like a big difference on the amount of, uh, coverage in an acre.
Yeah.
Does the, does the parcel have to be contiguous?
Most of the district has to be, the district, I believe fifty percent, Eric, fifty percent of the district has to be contiguous, right?
Yep, that's correct.
You could theoretically have two seven point five acre districts.
Potentially, yeah, I think, I think, um, H L C would just want to take a look at that and provide an opinion first before proceeding with that.
Yeah, how many, how many acres is the front of, um, Governor's Landing?
Oh, um. Eric, do you have that number offhand? Is, uh, the, the Upton's, uh, one forty small district, how many acres was, was that?
Let's see, I could try and pull that up real quick. I do want to mention too, that if you are considering other configurations, Eric, uh, my business partner, he helped develop the compliance model, so he knows all that in and out sideways. And so for all those different types of scenario testing, um, I'm sure he'd be happy to, uh, give his insights into that as well.
But, um, you know, we're sort of talking about two things here because if you're looking for, I was going to put on the affordability, or you do have to do a certain hundred, two, three bedrooms. So if we're looking at doing between ten and fifteen percent of affordable, those of them are bigger and by definition.
That's right.
And then the, you know, but most of that is, this is, this is for economic development. This whole project plan is not the just this was the exercise that we did this time.
Uh, it was.
Oh, even contest here, I think.
Forty East Small. It's, uh, fourteen point three.
Oh.
Acres.
Just the front.
Yeah.
Can we add it? Can we add it? Uh points, another point seven.
But that's so that was why, but the the reason why it was fourteen point three is to um create the district that is obviously meeting the minimum compliance could, which has to be at least ten acres or.
Yeah.
Hundred and fifty units over over, um yeah, so.
So so it would still, it would meet that, potentially meet that.
Yeah.
Thinking that as we go to town meeting with something.
Yeah.
That's gonna be easier than.
Yeah.
Downtown, yeah, because downtown people live downtown. Yeah.
I mean, I saw it through the chair, I tend to agree, um but also also providing for infill development within your economic development district also makes good planning sense for a lot of reasons. But but I I very much understand and appreciate the political ramifications of this as well.
Makes great planning sense. It doesn't make great political sense.
Correct.
Right, though. So any other questions for Eric?
Oh, okay, um Eric, unless you have anything else, I will be in contact with just uh next steps.
Yeah, let's see, what is the next step?
Um well, I was gonna ask, uh Eric, do we just, do we basically just submit this to HLC now or is it um? Do we have to wait for another step?
Uh, yes, I believe I sent, I didn't send you one with a draft on it, right? I can't send you a, nope, I did not. Okay, yeah, so you should be able to send that in with the.
Just.
By law. Oh, can you?
Get back.
You said we send it in with the so with the zoning bylaw?
Yeah, so you send it in as a package, the compliance model, the bylaw and the EFA um and.
So the evaluate, the next step is um looking over bylaw language and uh firming up how you want that bylaw to read. Uh and then we'll send that in the draft form to HLC for their approval before going to public hearing on it. Question mark?
Uh so some towns have gone before and some have waited and gone after, so it's kind of up to you on that.
These have all made it through the judicial process.
Well, his uh uh are you talking about the the EFA that we're reviewing? I believe um Eric, every every EFA that RKG has provided um and submitted, those have been approved uh by HLC, correct?
So this is the challenge. We are waiting to hear back for most of them. EO HLC has been promising to release the results of all of these for a couple of months now, and we haven't heard anything from the state. Um Eric, my other uh partner, he is in frequent contact with EO HLC because he's part of their technical assistance working group. Um so he'd have better. And um we're supposed to get feedback. So if you want, I could have him follow up with you. And then if you wanna time it based on when we get results and if we have to make any quick changes, uh if that works.
Yeah, that makes sense.
But the next step with RKG, you're gonna help us come up with the bylaw language and with the public.
Well, I'll talk to Eric about that. Um I I believe our scope of services included not only this, but um working with this board with developing a public outreach.
Yeah, yeah.
Um scenarios. Those are the two main components. Um I can probably work with, and again, again, I don't I'm I don't think it was in our scope with RKG to work on the bylaw language, but I'll 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 review again. Um but if not, like we can, I I can get help from CMPC with with the bylaw language as well, uh which.
Public outreach is gonna be super important.
If not, we'll steal somebody else.
Exactly. Yeah, I believe it's mostly already written. This is um it's about playing with the uh, you know, what you can sub in for your dimensional controls and things like that.
Your copy paste goes pretty good.
Yeah, they're pretty good.
Just control C, control B. Sometimes I've not done.
Just find and replace.
That's right. Alright, cool. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Eric. Be in touch. Great, thanks so much. Have a good rest of your evening.
Um and what do we have for discussion for my flower drive?
Not much. Um I was able to uh um touch base with a developer. He gave me a call. Um and uh the update on that is he is trying to get quotes for work out there to um utilize the sixty nine and change thousand dollars. Um that is currently held in escrow to come obviously complete some of the work uh on that subdivision. Um so that I think I had that conversation maybe early last week or or the week before. Um so I I I'm waiting to hear back from him uh to see if he's done any any response from contractors.
Okay.
Wouldn't this be absolutely the worst time to be solicited for construction?
If you could ask.
Yeah.
You can pretend. Yeah, nobody's busy now, please.
Yeah, I mean, um be that as it may, uh the, you know, the residents want wanna see movement on that. So.
Does he have a landing type of focus on what we would like to get everything get done? Push it towards completion. We know I still was a whole line was the ones to be done there.
He didn't indicate to me his preferences as far as I have been, so I'll I'll follow up with him again as far as what he's thinking of um completing with that. Obviously, he he um he's trying to, I'm sure he's shopping that report round.
Yeah.
And and um giving that to potential contractors, saying, look at this, what can you get done? What can you get done, uh Mr. Contractor off of this punch list versus me telling you what to get done? Uh but I'll have that conversation with him.
So the focus should be the safety ones first, right? As far as bus pickup, that's the town's focus. He's not gonna get the, he's not gonna get bus pickup. The town's gonna get him uh and wave the end of the street.
End of the street.
So if they if he considers everything that looks unsafe for the neighborhood, I would think that would be the primary focus to begin with. I don't know if it's whatever was gonna, I haven't been there, I don't know, but what's dangerous, something exposed, something that could be hit.
Um. I didn't, I don't believe um DGT flagged any like safety concerns.
Uh that's good.
But um certainly in the report, they didn't. Um I think the biggest things were just the general condition of that road never having a final uh code on it, right? And just an exposed.
The grace should trade very.
Trade.
So the uh. Small animals could get sucked.
If a path hole is gonna wreck a mission, wreck a car, then that's a safety issue, so.
Sure.
Yeah. I mean, none of the green, the green is done, it's just like my, like, yeah, it's true. You've got the word.
My street is a giant, I love it that way.
There's no road, it's all.
I don't care. You guys aren't fixing it, are you?
Tom, do they?
Okay, it's good, just it's like that, yeah. Trucks, I've I've gotten on a first name basis with all the the guys, I'm down in patch and then it rains and the patch goes oil. Now, our our road on the just below, you know, where uh North Bridge owns the road, it used to be like that, they finally.
Now they get any stuff? Is that one of those places?
Oh, no, they just they they just never repaved it. They just wouldn't do it because it's only a, it's a really short stretch. And then the town up and put up a sign that's up and and pointed up the hills. To the unparked. But they finally did it, yeah. No, because people go real fast, yeah, and and around that corner and people care, they paint it too well. They can paint, which is not very well. So um we have time to discuss by force farm if people want to do that. Um I know I.
What is this?
Um. Is it, you mean just the request for the? Yeah, for the for the. I'm a little bit confused about it.
Um is it a site plan application?
Yes, so you have a site, a site plan application filed um to the board late on Thursday. Um so that's what was forwarded to the board.
That's not including us.
Is it, is it there? There?
Oh, just, yeah, okay.
Five Fort Farms is a farm, right?
Uh some sweet will.
Farm streets.
Sweet William, it's on North Street. It's sweet. Yeah, the former sweet.
That one to get bigger parking lot?
Yes, they they wanna basically establish formal parking on the site, is my understanding, um with with talking with uh Gray, Grace is her name. Um and so uh so that's what they seek to do, um is is create formalized paved parking. Uh so that, you know, I was there, they're, they, she's she's creating quite the business for herself over there.
Yeah.
Why does it fall under site plan? Is it more than test basis?
More than ten spaces, but this was also my question to the planning board.
How many exist currently, paved or otherwise?
There's a lot of.
He does not have an.
Yeah.
Well, we can, we can.
How many, how many people used to get in there for ice cream?
People leave the apartment and now currently.
Also, I went gravel. So what is it, parking in the area that he has designated parking or is it parking throughout the site?
It's the uh parking um on the site. You can park on the site, you have, and if you have whatever the dimension is, whether it's marked, if you look at um, what's the one? This is the red rock, right? To look at Red Rock's parking, that's not a paved area, that's why, right? Like you can, you can measure off that.
Along, is it private?
Yeah.
They park on either side of the road, it's possible.
Right.
And we've seen them park in the field on the other side of the house.
Right.
And you can park a couple of cars where the parking is proposed.
Yeah, they have a lot of people coming after this.
But if if you're telling me they can comfortably park four people now and they're gonna be doing ten total, but they don't need a site plan.
I think they'll be doing more than ten on that.
If they, if they can.
They can show us a couple dozen.
They can show, they can show them they have parking, efficient area for parking. Give us the number, then give us the total number of spots that they're looking for.
Well, it sounds like they're looking for twenty four or twenty five.
Well, then that would be more.
Then that's more than.
You know, but that that.
Well, yeah, that's actually kind of the interesting thing because they, like I said, they are, they have parks, people in the fields on the other side.
Yeah.
Alright, so they ought to get designated um out to the five, I think it's one twenty four is one handicap, I think twenty five is two. So they're gonna have to do uh take care of the handicap and total spaces. How many total spaces have they proposed, you know?
Yeah, I can count. Plus eight here, fifteen, simple. Um twenty six plus eight.
Forty four, thirty four.
Okay, so what they would need is to follow the site plan. Regulations they do have done.
Yeah, I mean, they they filed the site.
Yes.
Yeah, and so I think we're gonna have to send it out for review and do a site plan review. But my my thought is that the reason we're talking about this now is this letter and do, yeah. It was, you know, basically, if you look at this, it has nothing to do with the site plan. It has to do with, she wants a waiver of the project review fee for the driveway and parking area improvement projects. And I don't know what the purview of this board is, but if we need to send it out for peer review, and there are there are safety issues up there. And we can't with that.
One of the problems we're gonna have is if I don't, oh, sorry, I don't know if there's a our uh survey or survey issue. A lot of times I'm just making an extra parking lot, but the neighbor comes in and says, you're on my lane, right? So.
No, I I think we have to send it out for peer review, so I don't think we can waive the review man. It's my, that's my guy.
I would attempt to agree. If if you were going to send for review, then you need the.
Yeah, yeah.
So the town can't handle uh, you don't think our departments can handle that project safely?
In what way? I mean, I don't have an engineering degree, so I can't.
Conservation, road commissioner, uh police, fire, if all of those got together, they wouldn't, DPW, they wouldn't be able to tell us that that's a safe. Review, I I don't mind sending it up for review, but what do we get? What are we gonna get for trouble?
I would, so through through the chair, um really up to the board, if you don't want to send it for review, I'm entirely supportive of that. Um I I've certainly been a part of projects like this that don't go to peer review. Um and uh my assumption is um something that might wanna get reviewed, and this might also happen at the CONCON level is review of the stormwater that's being generated on the new perview surface.
Um but isn't that we hold?
Yeah.
Let's say we do hold a site plan review and instead of sending it out for peer review, we send it to all the town boards, conservation board, help everybody. And then if we're unsatisfied, we have the right to say we're holding filing fees.
Yeah.
Is there any?
It's just party, right? There's no, there's no building, get an addition, there's no, no, it's getting, but it's just party.
Just a party.
Yeah, well, that's soil disturbance, which is conservation and.
Yeah.
For the runoff.
And yeah, I mean, the the runoff, they're, they wanna put the parking on the the, having all that paved area running onto North Street is what, you know, I wanna have someone tell me that that's not going to be doing. Could the CONCON do that? Well, I I suspect they would send it to an engineer to do that. They don't, they wouldn't do that kind of entry overview.
So that you'll run in anywhere.
Well, if it's, if it's up here, is like, is the water gonna come down? Oh, no, 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 this is. Oh, okay, that's, oh, I see.
That's expecting it up here.
I was thinking that it was up here.
Well, Shrewsbury, that's.
Okay.
It's empty, why is it on the street?
Yeah.
Get back.
The issue here is, yeah, because this is, and there's a, Brian's five or six foot.
Ledge, ledge right there, yeah.
Um so they have the control for that. I know that that's some. I remember discussions, there's a, no, actually, there's a, there's a, a rock, a tiny wall.
Yeah. No, I was thinking about stony, I was thinking about stone, the stone wall.
There's a, there's a stone retaining wall.
Okay.
Which is at the same level.
We have a lot of, but also increased inspectors.
And they also.
Increased the, oh, yeah, and they're just like when you subdivision, you get signers on. And he gets certain sec- certain stages, you have inspectors, do the same thing with the site plan. When they're decorating, it'll be inspected with the pavement, finish coat, whatever, we could, you know, could put that in some condition.
Yeah.
To protect, what you're saying.
So I mean, is is there any precedent for having a project of this? I mean, this is a pretty substantial, you know, thirty four parkings, even though they park that many people there now. Um is there a precedent that we can do? I mean, it it's a fantastic operation, you know, and I would love to be able to accommodate. Um but the question is, do, is that, can we do that?
We, we, we did it with Red Rock a couple of years ago. They they had parking and they wanted to push the parking. And they had to walk and calculate, walk everything to see where people park safely.
Okay.
You know, um and they were able to, and they needed another five spots.
They need the handicap spot.
And they needed, so there's no, no site plan was needed. They just had to go through the building permit process.
But they they didn't need to get, this this is a big enough project that it needs site plan, whereas Red Rock, as you said.
If they don't already have thirty four, thirty five spots somewhere where you can park, if they already have those.
Doesn't have to be official spots, because they have thirty four spots for the park.
They just park in the field now.
They're going to put those spots that they want on the plan, we're gonna sign, just go to the building inspector, and he's gonna make sure that they build it that way. So it's whatever the plan's gonna be.
Okay.
They may wanna take more time and look at what they already have before they.
So even if it's informal spots, like, that's okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's up to through the chair, I'd say that's up to this board, how you want to treat that. Um the the authority of this board over um site plan is pretty, pretty absolute. Um and so you have the authority to waive technical compliance with site plan provisions uh to to whatever degree you wanna do that. You can, you can say to to Five Fort Farms, uh we waive all technical compliance with site plan. You don't have to do that. I'm not suggesting that, I'm just saying.
We look at the beach project, it's not a paved party at all. It's all fifty cars.
Uh.
The argument off of uh.
For corn?
Going up down my corns.
Going up and down.
Yeah.
The upper one is not paid.
Oh, right, the gap.
Very large, full fifty, sixty cars.
So I kind of, you know, we raised this issue of sending it out to the town. Can we do this in such a way that we say we we reserve the right to send it out for peer review? But if if the, if DPW and the building inspector and 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 CONCON. Public safety. And public safety all feel that it's not necessary, then we won't, but.
Could be, we, I don't know if it's a refundable applicant or non-refundable uh fee, but to to do it market way, it would be a refundable application, refundable fee. So that if we did not use it, go back, but if we did have to use it because somebody said we need more information.
Yeah, yeah. So yeah, they can do this.
There would have to be a refundable application fee.
The the fee itself for submitting uh submitting the plan is refundable. The the fee itself for submitting uh submitting the plan is refundable um based on like, if the application is withdrawn at some point. Um but I assume with not having any more clear guidance through the the bylaw and the regulations, I mean, you could, you you could absolutely, well, I'll let you put it this way, you can require that the fee be submitted, and that goes into escrow.
The project review fee, and then they can have it back if we don't use it.
Exactly, exactly, and then and then nothing's really being waived, uh except for your decision to go up to peer review.
Now, would it make sense to have Grace, you know, cuz we're we're looking at something pretty funky here? I mean, in my experience with the planning board, which hasn't been all that long, we've never had this discussion. Um to have her here so she understands exactly what her.
Plans on being at the next meeting.
Oh, yes, yeah, okay.
Except because still, you have to look over it ahead of time.
Oh.
Cuz if we're looking at this from an impact standard, what we do, there's no really no impact on our schools, police and fire, right? The impact's gonna be on the neighborhoods um and the environment.
It actually improves neighborhood, because right now driving there on a Saturday is pretty dusty.
But this application really is less of an impact thing, so it's a good focus on things.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Yeah.
So ahead of the next meeting, I can absolutely circulate this plans to all the various departments, you can get a, you can get a sense of.
How they feel.
Looking at it at the next meeting before before you decide to um post for public hearing, question mark?
It sounds like, that sounds like plan, I will also say that I noticed that we've said something about public hearing for the following meeting, I will, I am out uh the second meeting in June, in Finland, and I won't be calling.
You're still allowed to read it, you're still allowed the one, we can read it. Right, every one, if you get one free.
Great, that's right, yeah, you can watch the tape.
So this, cuz the thing is, if we're gonna have a public meeting.
Public hearing.
Public hearing.
Yeah.
Um we should know, we have all the answers for the uh budget.
I like, I like, I like your idea of of getting, before our next meeting, when we make this decision, when she's here, get, get a preliminary meeting from everybody. Yeah, I think we're, you know, yeah, I think DPW says, like, I'm not comfortable looking at this without a, without a.
Registered engineer.
Then that answers the question.
Or a ConCon, you know.
And another thing is.
Well, ConCon is a separate issue, cuz they can hire their own, like, their own consultant.
Another thing is the length of time that people park there, they're not parking there for the day, right? You're parking there just temporarily.
Yeah, coming to office.
And they always have the staff, they have, I think, the grandfather.
Mm-hmm.
Tracking traffic, he's really good at it. No, it's.
Invite, invite, and you can share with her the town responses.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Sounds good. Alright, okay, what's the public hearing we have next?
No. Oh, that was, that was in response to.
Yeah, cuz in the, in the, in the thing that went around, it said something about having the public hearing on June twenty.
That was, that was just a a potential timeline.
Oh, okay, okay, I thought it was a different public hearing, okay. Okay, so next on the agenda, I believe, is election of officers.
I think we could just postpone that till.
Nominate Mark as the chairperson.
Hello?
I nominate.
I second.
Chair.
And do do we do them all?
Not.
Yeah, okay, so nominate.
And I, I think, I'll do vice, you, what have you done, not done, if you've not done, I just done treasure.
So I think he's treasure again.
He gets to be clerk.
No, no, I thought clerk was the first one, I thought Bill is the clerk.
No, no, you didn't do clerk yet, right?
No, but I thought clerk was what you're supposed to.
It's probably, but since he's already skipped one, oh, we should send him.
We'll just, we'll just keep. Let's keep skipping.
The reason is the treasurer doesn't do much.
I know.
Yeah, so, so Bill can be treasurer.
It's a good first year, you know, it's, you gotta do so much.
Clark the first, this is what you learn.
Well.
So, okay, so vice chair.
Vice treasurer, clerk.
Okay.
Member.
And I get with sitting, yeah, make trouble.
I'll make it a motion.
I second.
I.
Um, hi, hi, okay.
Like to nominate uh Catherine for the CPC.
Which one do you want me, what?
I I would like to be CPC, CPC, okay.
Capital budget view.
Sure.
Capital budget does some money, you seemed interested in capital budget last time.
Nothing bad, nothing wrong with it.
Oh, they'll love it.
Yeah, no, they will, they'll like you a lot better than me. I actually ended the chair, cuz Dan was our, watching it out of that.
Really?
Yeah.
You have to kind of have some kind of baseline.
Well, you're part of it for a year, you're part of it for a year, so, but no one wanted it. So.
At least he's got to ignore the telephone threats.
And Gary for CMRC? Yeah, what about? Does anyone wanna, what, do we have anything besides, besides CMRC?
No.
CMRC is.
Central Mass Regional Planning Commission.
Well, you want to do something with the conservation.
I'd love to do something with conservation.
Oh, you do something with conservation?
I do. Once or twice a day.
Now, are there any other?
You're, you stay on ConCon?
I'm not on ConCon, no, I used to be on ConCon.
Represented on ConCon.
No, no, there's never happened, but.
And we only have this.
We refer to.
We have to find it.
He wants, do you, do you wanna do CMRC?
I don't care.
If you wanna, oh, you don't.
I don't wanna do, actually.
I'll do CMRC. Definitely, I'm going, but I'll I'll be the um, the thing. Oh, it's. Well, did you wanna do it? Want me to do it?
Well, I did, um.
CMRC, I thought you said you wanted to do.
I did, I did, but I also talked to Ken about it.
There's only a couple of them that you gotta go to there.
The CMRC, so Tommy's volunteering for CMRC.
Yeah. Why do, why do we leave this way?
Okay, okay.
Alright, so any questions? All those favor?
I.
Okay.
Enough of it?
Okay.
We we did the uh summer schedule already.
Oh, good, what was our, what did we end up with?
We raised, what did we do for the, it's the first Tuesday, the second Tuesday of each month, if not the?
The second of each month.
That we're meeting, yeah, except for, we are meeting in June, both meetings are packed, okay.
And how about a party for Paul, the brewery sometime in June?
That, great, Paul was not into having a party.
He said he would go to the brewery, I thought.
Oh, okay.
Unless we went to the brewery.
Okay.
And I think it's open on Tuesday. We could go over to Russia.
So, so uh, so so who wants to address this?
Does anybody know the guy? You know the guy?
Oh, well, we all sort of know him. You go there a lot.
Just tell them. Uh, do you want me to talk to them about?
Yes, I mean, just a Tuesday night, which is.
Yeah.
Just tell them that the board that appeals their application.
And then he keeps coming back to you, you know?
Yeah.
He keeps coming back to us. I, I, that's right, I'm trying, maybe they're.
Extend.
This is Rushford.
Yeah.
Rushford, he coming.
For the uh parking, in other words, for the bridge, this, when they.
Yeah, it was a house next, yeah, you're right. Four o'clock tomorrow.
They wanted to cut the house off.
Four o'clock tomorrow, Monday.
Yeah. Reduce furniture, so.
The next thing is parking when they uh redo the bridge, they're gonna, they can't cross it, they'll have to make a footbridge across.
Yeah, but they also have something going on because they're, want to sell the property, right? So they can lease it back, so, yeah.
That's, so we could also be all willing to do like a, like a Saturday must time or something, that's what we did, with, for a day, that was what we did, when we went there, lunch.
Why don't, why don't? Why don't you call Paul, or somebody call Paul and figure out when he'll do it?
I'd rather set the meeting, right, set the thing and tell him he's gotta go. And if he doesn't, I'll get a goddamn picture of him on the tape.
Yeah, I personally, I don't like Saturdays, they do too much work, it's a focus. Um but that's, if that's the only day people can do it, then.
Always write down.
Wow, but it always looks open when I'm leaving here, so.
I suppose, but we could make a Tuesday meeting in June, the first one. If the chairman makes a quick meeting, we could get there pretty quick.
Yeah, but but they're not open on Tuesdays.
It's Wednesday to Sunday.
Yeah.
Problem.
Yeah.
Well, you know, we don't have to do it after one of these weeks.
We can do it.
We can do it Wednesday.
It's your Wednesday.
Your Wednesday.
When is the annual meeting for the land trust, that's, that's a good. And it's on Monday. I do, I do, I'm Wednesday, so it's very, very.
Hypothetically speaking, yes, you've never been there.
Oh, that's right, they have, they have events.
They get two events.
Did we trivia them?
And then you open it for us? Yeah, yeah.
Open it on.
Well, like you said, I mean, when we, when we go out there, you could look and see, it usually looks like they're there, yeah.
They might make a beer on.
Somebody's there, they're making beer.
Making beer.
Check with them, see if we can see something.
I'll make it, it's wild.
Actually, very good to drink, we're drinking there. Yeah, we'll drink a beer, now you're not available the second meeting, no, so it'd have to be the first, that's right.
Yeah, I'm not a favorite, I will be here first meeting in June, fall.
Finally, by the, sweet about the sixteenth.
I'm on beer this year.
Well, actually, now I'm trying to figure out, because we need. I think it'd be good for you to go, cuz it's bonding.
Of course.
You go, you know Paul. So, I, and then July gets really funky, you know?
Sorry, I'll be here that week, the first meeting in June.
Would you, yeah, well, no, we're we're talking about the last one.
We couldn't do it like. If we did it like Tuesday.
Seven, seven.
Wait, uh, for April, June.
Yeah, but gray sauce is such a really packed on.
Oh, that's right.
Don't do it.
Yeah, no, I leave on the sixteenth, so.
I can ask them when the wife's in quiet or not.
My distant family, yes.
Be born?
All owners of this.
Paul is the.
For the family. For a week.
But those two, I think, can.
Oh, Italy, my family.
I can probably do it the same too.
I'm sorry?
When are you leaving June?
I'm leaving this Saturday, we're gonna, Italy, see some family out there.
And you're gone for how long?
The fifteenth.
And I leave on, I literally leave on the sixteenth.
Yeah, we're gonna travel in December.
It can't get much further, so.
It's water.
Because the summer's gonna be impossible.
My uh father's on my council.
He's a seven?
Yeah, yeah.
That's what we ended up doing. With Gary, you didn't send up Gary.
That was a long time later, um what are, I mean, I'm I'm gone the second.
We'll, we'll talk to you. Break us.
Yeah, I, yeah, we are looking probably at August. And this isn't even accounting for Paul's schedule, yeah.
Who?
Paul.
I thought he was a worker at this point.
So is is everyone available in August for the?
Yeah.
Ever.